It's five thirty, so let's call to order this meeting. Jordan, would you start us off with the roll call?
Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronan.
Present.
Foeburg, Lee Belt.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E. Conger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norvstrup.
Present.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business here today will be to approve this week's agenda. I'm not aware of any changes to be made, so I would take a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Ward, second E. Conger. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Next is to approve the meeting minutes from our previous meeting, which took place one week ago on August eighteenth. Can someone make a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
Move to approve, or second, whatever the case.
Got a motion from Nielsen and a second from Lee Belt. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. We have three signees interested in visiting with us, all on the same topic for two-way Main Street conversion here. I will list them in order. We've got about a ten-minute timeframe that we set aside in these meetings for this activity. I would imagine there's maybe some joint discussion points to be covered. So why don't we do this? Brent, do you want to go first? Well, Brent, find his way up to the podium. This is Brent Fisher. He's a business owner downtown on the, between Fifth and Sixth Avenue on Main Street. I'm going to set it for five minutes, assuming that you'll cover a lot of the main points, and we'll give a few minutes to each of the remaining folks if they've got additional stuff to, to, to visit about here. So Brent, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your letting me come and talk tonight. My name is Brent Fisher. I own property on the five hundred block of South Main Street for the past forty years, and I'm concerned about the two-way Main Street. It has a personal effect on my business, being that my parking in front of my business that's been there for the past forty years will be eliminated. Taking away parking for my customers that are used to parking there. Plus, there'll be an additional, probably two, I think, spots for the next blocks that will also be eliminated for the loss of fifteen to twenty parking places on Main Street, the way I understand this. The one thing I do agree with it, that there will be more car count, and that's the big push, that they're going to get more traffic downtown. My view on that is, I totally agree with it, but is it going to bring us more business? I think it's going to increase safety concerns, and it'll end up more of a thoroughfare, just like State Dakota. And second, it'll just be a racetrack from one end of town to the other, but I don't feel as a businessperson, I'm going to gain any business from it. Rather, like I say, more of a safety concern of the cross-traffic, and my customers having to walk across traffic, coming back and forth. The other thing currently, every day, there's delivery trucks on Main Street, all the time, dropping off FedEx, UPS. With the two, with the, both the one-way Main, if there's a truck, you can go around the other lane and go around that. Now, if it were to be a two-way Main, you're going to have to avoid head-on traffic coming on you to go around those delivery trucks, which I see as a safety issue. It's a huge thing for Domino's Pizza, who Darren will speak here in a minute to. His customers come there every night. I can see between four and seven o'clock, just cars, come, go, come, go. They're picking up their product, their pizza from there. That's his only place he has for his customers to pick up his pizza. Melchel Plaza, also Saturday morning when they have Farmer's Market. It's just droves of people, kids with strollers, families just meandering around that whole block, dropping off their goods, buying their goods. That would be, you know, a total different atmosphere down there if there was two-way traffic. I spoke with Mark Peterson at DOT regarding the stoplight at Sixth and Main there, and he told me that's about a seventy-five thousand dollar pole that has to be replaced there in order to make the two-way Main Street work. He said that pole takes approximately eight months to get, and if this is slated for next year's construction for the summer season, he's going to need to order that in the next few months. And he says he'll gladly not order it, or if it's, you know, either way, but he just kind of needs to know if that's going to get ordered. So it's a time-sensitive thing here a little bit, if this moves forward. I've been polling customers coming in my business for the last several weeks since I kind of got a little bit excited about this, and I can honestly say I haven't had one person in favor of this. Not one single person, everybody just scratching their head and like, why would the city spend this kind of money for something that is going to be worse than what we have now? So I just don't think maybe we're really in tune with the community and the public as far as where they're standing on this. I feel that there's a vocal minority of people that are trying to push this issue through, but they're not necessarily representing the city as a whole, the citizens here. I think there's a lot of other projects that that public money could be used for. The new Public Works Building has been cut back, cut back, cut back down, you know, and I mean, they'd gladly take another million dollars to make their facility larger. Chamber, or the, the senior citizens want in addition, I mean, repair our roads, I mean, it's a no-brainer. There's just a lot of places that money could be used. There again, I see safety concerns with additional traffic down there, little kids, children, and dealing with that. I think the current one-way works great. I've been there for forty years, no issues with it. It's just, it's a super-good system that's set up. So I guess I would encourage each of you councilpeople to seek out your constituents in your districts and get a feel for the pulse of the community on this project. I think you'd be surprised how little support there is for this, and that's who you represent, so that's who you should be listening to, instead of special interest groups or whoever is really behind pushing this. And with that said, I would, I don't know how the system works, but I would request that maybe you put this back on your agenda for some meeting and maybe do a revote after you've done your research and talked to the people in the community. And before you move forward with this, just kind of get a feel for that. Then we'll know kind of the direction to go. I do have kind of a grassroots group ready to get petitions out and put this for a ballot vote, if, you know, if the council would consider, you know, continue to push this forward. So we're ready to do whatever it takes to rethink this a little bit. So with that, I will pass. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not chipping one.
Yeah, if you have any questions, yeah.
I, um, yeah, it's not really a time for questions. I was just going to make mention, you couldn't, you don't look like you're old enough to have had a building for forty years. Is that true? Statistic?
Nineteen eighty-six, so it'll be thirty-nine, forty next year.
Fair enough. I still don't believe it, but, um, all right. Darren? Darren's with Domino's. Brent is with Don's Builders Hardware down there. Welcome to the meeting. I know that you echo some of the same points as, as Brent did, so if you keep it to the ones that maybe he didn't mention, I think.
Yeah, I just have a prepared thing to read off, so it won't take too long. I echo what Brent said exactly, but my name's Darren Duval. I'm the owner of Aberdeen's Domino's Pizza. We're located at five twenty-second South Main Street and have been happily operating at this location since nineteen ninety-five, the year I started there too, by the way. Domino's has been in business in Aberdeen since nineteen eighty-five. We were at a different location before that. I and my wife Rachel, we own the building at five eighteen and five twenty-second South Main Street, and the same lot, ten and twelve Sixth Avenue Southwest. Recently came to learn that the parking in front of my building is going to be eliminated, or scheduled to be eliminated, so therefore I'm very concerned about that. Feel it'll be detrimental to my business as well as to property values, and most importantly, safety and my staff and customers. Why is that? We have a lot of carryout customers, and most of them, seventy-five to ninety percent of them park on Main Street, pick up their pizza, go back out, go on their way. So if they have to park on the other side of Main Street, they got to cross three lanes of traffic. Same way with my employees. We have curbside delivery, so the system tells us that they're there. We just take it out to them, give it to them in their car. I do have a little parking lot, but we also have a lot of delivery drivers, so there's not room for everybody, so. I have maybe six spots in my parking lot, and then I count on those five to ten spots on Main Street if they're available, so. Let's see, the only, although I have some numbers here, just so you guys know, we were way slower back in nineteen ninety-five, by the way, so we've been blessed with sales growth over the years. But in twenty-twenty-two, we had thirty-two thousand carryouts, twenty-twenty-three, thirty-four thousand, twenty-four, thirty-eight thousand, and so far this year, we're two-point-six percent over that. So, you know, it's a lot of people coming and going, so just want to let you guys know that, so. I do feel the only people negatively affected by this plan happen to be me and Brent and that side of the street with the parking being gone, so. Parking's very valuable downtown, as you guys know. I'm just asking if you, like, just like Brent said, reconsider the, doing the project, I guess, so. For the businesses affected and the safety of employees and customers. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us here, Brent. That's.
Also, I got to go to a church council meeting, so I'm going to leave after this.
Fair enough. You don't have to stick around. Well, it's an astounding amount of traffic that you're driving down there. Thanks for sharing. Representative Al Knopster here next on the same topic. Al?
Thank you. Two, two points, and they'll be quick. One point is, it just doesn't seem like a good use of money. It's, uh, step back, and I don't, I don't have a dollar, but let's say it's a million dollars. That's a lot of taxpayers' money, and to spend it on rearranging Main Street just doesn't seem like the very best use of the dollar. The other thing that strikes me is government should not be picking winners and losers. They shouldn't be putting their thumb on the scale of free enterprise, and I'll explain that. So what this, if I understand, the purpose of this is to enhance the businesses on Main Street. Well, if you do that, I think you're putting your thumb on the scale of free enterprise. Why not do it for the businesses on Eighth Avenue? Why not do it for the businesses on Roosevelt? Where does it end? Why is, why is this particular street special compared to the other ones that is worth a million-dollar investment? Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Al. Good to see you as always, and I think that everyone's kind of made note of those different points. This will be something that we'll continue to have conversation about, and there's a lot of different vested stakeholders up here in the council than there was when the decision was originally made. Moving along, we've got a consent calendar here tonight. We've got five items of routine city business. I would take a motion to approve our consent calendar. Thanks for joining, Darren. Good to see you.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilwoman Foeburg, second Councilman Ward. Anyone have anything on any of these consent calendar items? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. No old business here tonight. Wrapped up everything with a bow last week, so we'll move on to our new business. We have a little bit of a presentation. Our home daycare program improvements. Amber is joining us here, economic development manager. I know that she worked with Ken on this one in terms of trying to breathe some new life into our home daycare processes around here and trying to make, hopefully incentivize and, and increase some options for parents that have kids in daycare. Amber, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, councilmembers. So I'd like to give you a brief preview of some of the important changes directly tied to workforce recruitment and retention. It's a big part of economic development, so when the G O E D actually took a stance on it a few years ago, there's been some momentum in our community. Not only did the city of Aberdeen sign a memorandum of agreement with Early Learner, also worked with Aberdeen Development Corporation on some well-needed surveys to understand needs in the community. I think these changes are going to help in home daycares, which is the best way the city can move forward. So some of the highlights, first, and this is already in place, our community development department now has the authority to approve daycare locations administratively. It eliminates the monthly delay of going through the zoning board. That stuff is already in place and working. This is going to reduce that time. They won't have to go through zoning board. The building inspection, fire inspection, everyone has a chance to look at that location, where it's going to be located. If there is a question, they can go to the zoning board upon approval of the community development director. Next, our finance officer will have the authority to issue license as soon as all requirements are met, with the right of appeal to this council if there's ever a denial. With this also, we're going to allow the daycares to have temporary operation for up to sixty days while their license process is being finalized, giving families more immediate access to childcare. This also will be helpful if a daycare is moving locations. Right now, sometimes that daycare has to actually stop operating before they go to their next location. As long as we're getting those inspections scheduled, we're getting them to move. If they've been in place before and under good care and have been following the processes, then we can just move that through, let them temporary operate, and just get everything going, so that way no one has to lose their childcare or their ability to be able to go to work. We're also going to introduce the family daycare option, and this was actually something brought on by the finance department. So Jordan and Stephen had been doing some research why we were having these meetings in the city regarding enhancing daycare, and they saw that there was a family daycare option that some other communities were utilizing. What this means is if you are a daycare provider or want to run a daycare, but you have a smaller number of children. Right now, our in-home daycares, it's up to twelve, but if it's a smaller number of children, so five and under, you can actually run it through your homeowner policy instead of getting a commercial policy. So this will be cost savings for that in-home daycare provider, but it will also give another option to have more people start businesses, especially if they're just choosing to do it maybe for a shorter period of time because they're having their own child, or maybe they have some friends that have kids and they just want to do it at a smaller scale. So it'll be a nice option, and we're really looking forward to that. Also, we are going to do license renewals in blocks instead of year-round. So right now, how it works is if I started a daycare in January and Travis started a daycare in February, Aaron started one in March, we all have a different renewal period. So it's a lot of following up every month with whoever was in January, whoever was in February, whoever was in March. So we're going to do two different times, one in April, one in September, and then we're going to split that number in half. So basically, we have forty-four active daycares right now, so twenty-two would be at the April renewal, twenty-two would be at the September renewal. It'll be easy for us to reach out to them, communicate, also schedule CPR and first aid with those renewals, and that is actually going to be included in the renewal and get done by the fire department, and we're just going to offer it to them right then. So it'll be easy to say, sign up for your class within this next thirty, sixty-day period, and then we also won't have to be following up for those types of actions. It'll just be one-stop shop, make it nice and easy, and also they'll know, I renew every April, I renew every September. Takes away them having to remember that. And then we are also going to really start pushing what was known before as the suboperator program. We're going to call it licensed helper versus suboperator, and with our licensed helper program, this is really going to help alleviate daycare providers from having gap in coverage. So if they need to go to a doctor's appointment, or if they have a student and they have a program, and they can't attend that program at school because they're watching other kids, it really limits them, and it's part of the reason why a lot of the daycare providers want to get out of daycare providing when their kids are in school, because they can't attend those functions. So with this licensed operator program, they will get licensed through a shorter application. They'll do all the background check. They'll be able to either be licensed through the provider's license, through the provider's insurance, or they can get their own insurance, and they'll be like a substitute list. You'll be able to give them a call, and they can come in, and they can cover in the daycare for an hour or two, or maybe even hire them more if you wanted to enhance your programming, let's say, and sign up for some ARC programming and take the kids there once a week, or go to the library and do the toddler storytime. And maybe you just need someone to help you transport the kids, be there to make sure that, you know, you don't let any of them out of your sight or out of your care, because that's a lot to look after. I have three, and sometimes I lose my two-year-old, so. Yeah, so that's going to be great, and we're also going to partner with NSU. Had a great conversation at the Workforce and Development Committee at the Chamber, and Carly Bierman was there, and she's very interested in working on internship program and having some of the students that attend Northern for early learning get into that licensed helper program, and then I'm also on the Early Learner Development, which has a lot of members of the community, and we'd be able to potentially partner with some of those teachers and other people who are looking for jobs in the summertime, or maybe in addition to what they're doing right now. So it's going to be great. And then, again, I did mention, but I'll say it again, the CPR and first aid training is going to be through Aberdeen Fire and Rescue. I think it's going to be an amazing thing that we're offering when they're doing the licensing. They don't have to go out and find it anywhere else. We're simplifying the online application packet. They're actually going to be able to fill out the application packet online. We decided to remove some of the information that would make it not an option that you'd want to send it through email, and with removing those items, it'll be easier in-house for us to route that packet as well. So before we were actually putting the daycare applications in a manila folder and taking them from department to department, now you can route it to each department in one email, and they can sign off. So if fire's done their inspection and it's good to go, fire can sign off on it. If building inspection's been there, they can sign off on it, instead of having to wait from department to department for each person to do that. This is going to very, it's going to speed up that process as well. Right now, sometimes it can take up to thirty, forty-five days for that to happen, especially with weekends and city government being, you know, eight to five, Monday through Friday, so if maybe the packet gets handed off on a Friday, and, you know, then you're not starting the process again until the following Monday, and if the, you know, inspection hasn't been done, then you're waiting. So I think that's going to be helpful. A big thing that we have not done in the past and is going to be new is they're actually going to have a city website page. So we are going to actually have the application fillable online. We're going to have important FAQs from each department online, so they can research that there instead of having to call and maybe get transferred around and not know who to talk to. And then we're also going to have the providers listed on our website for ease of access for our community, because again, we really want to make sure our community feels supported when they're working as well. So that will be on there. They'll obviously have to get that, a sign-off and opt-in on that. We are not going to put anyone's information on the website that doesn't want it on there, but think of it no different than a business listing on Google, for example. So that's going to be great. It'll also explain all of our insurance, our CPR requirements, the difference between an in-home daycare, a family daycare, as well as a commercial daycare in the event that maybe somebody has twelve kids and they're interested in actually expanding their business, which would be a great thing in our community. So I think having those resources available online and making it seem like it's an actual department and an offering that we have from the city is going to make them feel supported. The other thing is links to resources within the community, so that calendar for CPR training will be on there, and then any of the events happening in our community from the city and through Early Learner will also be listed on that calendar. So we're supporting our in-home daycare providers with ways that they can maybe further their career or take a course that would help them in the early learning stages of development, or again, find those programs that the city offers for free through the library. So it's going to be great to have that website page, and once the ordinance gets approved and all of these changes are all buckled up, then I will also present that website to you probably towards the end of September. So those are all of the reforms, and we're really looking forward to removing those unnecessary barriers and supporting our in-home providers. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just want to say thank you, Amber, for all the time that you put into this, and I know Ken and his team were involved a lot too, as well as Jordan and his team, and I think just a number of conversations that you had with providers. And I know you made a lot of calls to providers who got out of the daycare business when making some of these decisions. Can you talk just a little bit about your process?
Sure. So one of the first times that I realized that, you know, a lot of in-home providers weren't really a part of the story of childcare in Aberdeen was actually at Early Learner meetings. Well, they weren't really even present to begin, and when I was looking at how can the city actually help, that's when we all sat down together within the city and said, how can we do something that isn't really handing out money to another organization to try to figure out the problem that's going on in our community? What are we doing to change things? So yeah, having conversations, I have a lot of friends who are actually in-home providers. I actually have a cousin who's an in-home provider. She cares for my children, has cared for all three of my children, so it was very interesting listening to feeling like they can't take PTO, feeling like they're letting down, you know, their employers and employees when they're having to take time off, not being able to attend, like I was saying, school programming, you know, feeling like I can't go to my son's Christmas concert or things like that. And it was interesting, I actually went into Jordan's office and we had a conversation. He pulled up the Excel document, and he's a whiz with that, that program, and what we were noticing too is there was a trend of declines in people staying long-term career in daycare. So what that's showing us is that they're really opening these daycares for the first five years, and then when their kid goes to kindergarten, because they're feeling some of these pressures, they're not looking at this as a long-term career. So how can we support them so it can be a long-term career? So that's really what helped formulate a lot of these thought processes, so it's not just five years while my child is getting to kindergarten. How can we say, this is actually a great thing and our community needs you, so let's support you? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amber. Appreciate the improved efficiencies. When Amber first came and said that she was going to be working on the daycare thing, I figured maybe one or two or three improvements, but it seems like you've got five or six improvements to the system all rolled into one, so nice work, very thorough. Tell me.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, thank you. Appreciate it. It's, uh, sounds well-thought-out, well-organized. Like to see streamlined approaches to things, so I appreciate it. I did have a couple of questions, just things that came to mind in listening. The, uh, I guess you talked about relying on the homeowner poli, homeowner policies rather than additional, I assume it's some sort of additional.
Insurance coverage?
Riders. Insurance, yeah, it'd be more than a rider, I would think, but anyway, is that something that universally homeowners' insurances are prepared to take on? Because I think the question for me would be, all right, okay, but did they sign up for it, you know?
Great question. So this is why it's so important for so many departments to work together within the city, and I know everyone hates meetings. And I call a lot of them sometimes, but it's usually because we have something to discuss such as this, and Ron has actually been doing a lot of work on this, so I might let him cover this question.
So for those who, who want to be typically more than five, up to six, you'll have to go to a commercial policy for sure. I know that in-home childcare is a rider that you can get on a homeowner's insurance policy, but it is something that we would require that they actually confirm and verify that they've got that type of coverage to whether that homeowner, that particular homeowner insurance would qualify. And homeowner insurance, as you know, would be typically be a cheaper insurance. It covers other things. But that five and six number, most of them are riders, are riders now are endorsing only up to five, but I think in the, in the proposed language, we would allow up to six, because there have been a few that have allowed up to six under the homeowner insurance.
But then there's, there's a step to confirm that.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, let's see, the next thing I was wondering about was there was, I'm sorry, I missed, who gets to actually decide? I mean, I know it was, who gets to say, okay, the process is done. Yes, we've got everything. Here's your license.
That's the finance office.
That is the finance office. Okay, so the only question I had there was, I was just wondering, does, I mean, right now it has to go before a board, right? And maybe this is a question for you, actually. Right now it goes before a board. Does that transfer any liability to our finance department employees signing off on this?
No.
Okay.
And that's one of these things that it's good for all of us to hear, that in the, in the regulatory world, there is not a private duty that's created between the entity and that person. It's still a public duty, so there would be no, no kind of a unique liability as to the staff or anything like that. And just so you know, every, every license has a, a good moral character requirement. And just so you know, every license has a good moral character requirement. And usually in that process, whether it's through the background investigation or stuff like that, we're answering those questions too. And so in the event that we had a question, even though somebody checks all the boxes, we still have concerns. Jordan can deny the application and allow that person to come before the council, and the council can make that decision.
Okay, I just didn't wanna set Jordan up badly, that's.
Don't want him auto-pinning those things, you know?
Something like that. I was less worried about that than, but yes. The only other question I had really is with the removal of information so that you can send it around through email and route. I mean, that sounds very convenient. But does it, I assume that we've somewhere, we're still collecting the information, so we've got it solidified in identification.
That is correct. We will be collecting that information when it gets to the police department.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. One thing I did want to just quickly cover, we will have KPIs too. It'll be very easy for us to track some of these, such as approval timelines, provider growth, which is an ultimate goal here, right? We'd like to see that number increase. Also helper program participation. We'll be able to know if there's anybody registered and how are we marketing to that? And do we have an interest level? And then training completion with the CPR courses. So offering those through the city, it should be a seamless process and we should be able to see that a lot quicker and alleviate them not having a location to get that. So it'll be nice to follow up on those as well, cuz it's always good to see progress. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. And thanks for helping to eliminate those bottlenecks in bureaucracy. We always appreciate that up here.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion for approval on those?
No, this is just information.
Just not adopting anything in there?
Taking a look at an ordinance with those changes. So plant it in the back of your mind and again, look out for ordinance changes moving forward. If there's something that concerns you or comes to your mind between now and then, we can have a discussion about it, or you can go to Amber with that information. Next, new business item B is the possible approval of a purchase agreement for the city to acquire land from the First Baptist Church for a neighborhood park. I see my own name is on there, as well as Parks and Rec Director Matt, Ron Matt is watching his kids tonight. Perhaps if these policies have been enacted before, maybe he'd be here with us. But he's watching them and he asked that I chat with you guys about this. So I know that I've talked to you a couple of times about it in the past. The genesis is there's no neighborhood park for the neighborhood just to the west of Aberdeen Central's high school. There's a lot of young families with a lot of kids that have to travel for any park access. And it's been a top concern for some time, but nothing has been able to be done because of the confined space in that neighborhood. I took a look with a couple of others and identified some potential locations for a park and playground. And one of them was the southeast property adjacent to the First Baptist Church. And it was just big enough for a playground. And by and by, the School for the Blind reached out and said that they had a playground that was in all but new condition that they were needing to get rid of. And so all these things kinda fell together. I worked with First Baptist Church to approve a sale of that property to the city. We were given a very, very fair price, I felt, of twenty thousand dollars for about half of an acre of property, which would be enough to make this happen. And we will be able to, as early as this fall, take that equipment, which has been deconstructed over at the School for the Blind and reconstructed over there, making for probably the most cost-effective neighborhood park that Aberdeen has seen dollar for dollar. So this motion would be to approve the purchase agreement of the city to acquire this land for twenty thousand dollars plus closing costs, which will amount to perhaps fifteen hundred dollars is what it looks as though.
I'm very proud to make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilwoman Leebelt, second, Councilwoman Foberg. And now there is one bit of a wrinkle, and I will bring up that in the discussions of this land acquisition, Matt Braun, who's the new Parks and Rec Director, who's been held under no uncertain terms to keeping within his pre-arranged budget. This is something that kinda fell on him from outside. So I thought that it would be reasonable to provide the funding for the land itself, should the Parks and Rec handle the concrete and the equipment acquisition for the city to cover the cost of that land. That had been something that we've kinda verbally discussed as a bit of a, a bit of a agreement that would allow him to better maintain his annual budget without the unexpected expense, and it is just twenty thousand dollars. So I'm asking that we pull that from the general fund reserves, give that to the Parks Department for this use, the twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars or whatever amounts to, so that he can hold on to his budget without negative impact of a out-of-the-left-field budget unexpected expense. Currently, we were slated to pull that from the Parks Fund, which falls within the Parks and Rec Department. So if someone would make that motion.
So are you asking for an amendment to the existing motion?
I believe so, yeah. Jordan?
So I would move to amend the existing motion to further provide that the payment for the purchase be made from the general fund reserve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Ronane and a second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion from the council? All right, what have you got? Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all of your work and efforts on this. I myself, I do like parks, I am not in favor of this. I think it's a little bit of a frivolous spend. There are other park options in that area that are already established. There's neighborhoods that have far farther to traverse to find parks than the neighborhood there. I just, I don't think it's a, it's a good deal, but there's maintenance, there's mowing, there's all these other things with it. And I just, I can't support the cost on that.
Thank you for sharing. Chad? Appreciate that. Will say, I can't imagine we'll be incredibly burdened by additional maintenance costs or mowing costs or existing mowing. Staff ought to be able to cover that.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I have you get a vote on the motion to amend?
Sure. Yeah, why don't we start with a vote to amend, to pull from the general fund reserve the necessary funds to make this acquisition to be given to the Parks Department? Jordan, would you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Ronane?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Leebelt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Any further discussion about the part or the purchase agreement itself? It's twenty thousand dollars, roughly half of an acre in the southeast side of First Baptist Church. One thing I would also like to say is that their congregation, I'd like to thank those guys, they unanimously agreed to sell us this property. That was a requirement of their bylaws, so we had to take it to their leadership team and then their congregation as a whole. So those guys were strongly in favor of having a park down there. Any other discussion on the park itself?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I support the park and appreciate your solution of working with the First Baptist Church. I think it's a great solution for the location and also to, for the church to be involved in it as well cuz it's that piece of land, I think, serves that whole neighborhood better than other parcels that we talked about in the past for this particular neighborhood. I hear Chad, or Councilman Nelson, and my take on this particular neighborhood and why it needs a park is because the density of housing there, there's apartments, there's townhouses, there's variable incomes there, and Melgar, it's not an easy road to cross. So I definitely support this park and I appreciate the ingenuity to finding a solution.
Well, thank you, yeah. And I think that if it wasn't something that I felt like it was a burden for those families to get across, I travel down there a lot, I run down there a lot. I have yet to see children crossing that intersection to get to that other park on foot. And so I know that they're having to load up in automobiles and travel to parks. So it's a neighborhood that is definitely grown and it's a neighborhood that definitely has a lot of young families that'll take advantage of this park. And I'm excited to see it come together so quickly. It usually takes two years to put together a park in this town. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on the purchase agreement?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Leebelt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have a possible approval of a resolution, which approves a second restatement of the agreement establishing the ABCRRA. Ron, would you walk us through that railroad business?
Mr. Mayor, the Aberdeen is part of a consortium called the Aberdeen-Brown County Regional Railroad Authority, and they've been with that since the early nineties. And initially, that agreement was just between Aberdeen and Brown County. And then in two thousand seven area timeframe, three additional counties join on. And at that time, there was a first restatement of the agreement establishing the Regional Railroad Authority. Since I've been on board with the city, we've been meeting annually and we've seen some issues with the way commissioners are elected and the way that we have to handle our funds, that we don't have any funds. And so what we've been able to do is look at the statutes, visit with the South Dakota State Railroad Board, and have proposed some changes to the restatement. So it's now will be the second restatement of the agreement. But what it does in, in relevant part is it increases the terms of the elected commissioners from one year to three years. And that one year was actually in that agreement now, and by statute, it should be three years. And it also allows us to designate the South Dakota Secretary of Transportation as the handler of the money of the Aberdeen-Brown County Regional Railroad Authority. Just so everyone is aware, it's a pass-through organization where when monies are loaned, those come from the State Railroad Board. They are loaned to the industry that's utilizing the siding or whatever the train equipment is. And we have a quick pass-through of the money and that's the last time we see any money. And so what this restatement does is allows us to make those changes. The resolution is being adopted by this council and by the four county commissions that are involved. So the same thing has gone out and the council did have the packet that the commissioners for the Brown County, or the ABCRRA acted on and recommended. And so with that, staff would recommend that the council approve the resolution that's attached to it. And as part of that, we're asking that there also be two names added to the resolution to be appointed as commissioner and alternate commissioner for a term of three years. So for those of you who have the resolution in front of you, Rob Ronane is now acting as our head commissioner. And I think Aaron Foberg is our alternate.
She's doing a great job.
Yeah.
And recognizing that terms can change, but we would ask that perhaps Rob Ronane be appointed as the commissioner and Aaron Foberg be appointed as the alternate commissioner for a term of three years. And we'll, as things change and people leave, and we can change those. But for now, we would ask that the resolution reflect that as well.
Would someone in the council care to make a motion to approve the resolution as well as those two appointments?
Or without?
I move to reinstate the ABCRRA and those appointments as well.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Councilman Norvstrup and a second, Councilman Nelson. Any questions or discussion to be had? Rob, how are those meetings? Would you agree they're painless?
They are painless and today, last, what was it? Last, this month's meeting was the longest we ever had. I think it went twelve minutes.
Fair enough. It doesn't hurt too bad to be on that committee.
Quite efficient.
All right, any other discussion before we take a vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, oh. Sorry about that. I had it myself. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on that resolution?
Councilmember Ronane?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Leebelt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval of an ordinance. First reading, it is to rezone property from C2 to R3. It's at 511 South Arch Street. Ken, what can you tell us about that property?
Thank you, Mayor. This property was purchased in the last year by a new owner who is intending to renovate and then facilitate its continued use as a single-family residence, therefore the petition to rezone to residential. The planning commission approved this request at its August nineteenth meeting and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Nelson. Was there a ramp in front of this home that's been removed?
Not in front of this one.
Okay.
That would be the yellow house on the corner.
Got it. All right, any questions? Community Development Director Ken, all right. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Leebelt?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval of WRF improvements. Project pay request title number two is for two million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-six thousand and thirty cents to PKG Contracting. We've got Amanda Fisher from the wastewater treatment plant down here. Man, I've been seeing quite a bit of heavy equipment moving around down there. They want some money.
A lot of groundwork progress moving forward and just wrapping that up and starting to look forward to tying rebar and moving towards cement work out there.
Would someone make a motion to pay the two-point-eight-million-dollar?
Second.
Motion, E. Conger, second, Ward. And how much was the first invoice that we had? This one's titled as payment number two.
It was shy of five million.
So we're gonna get that ninety-two million spent.
We will do good on it.
All right, any questions from Ms. Fisher? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronane?
Aye.
Foberg?
Aye.
Leebelt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Thanks for joining us, Amanda. Good to see you as always. Next, we've got possible approval to purchase Ford F-550 brush truck from Midwest Fire of Laverne, Minnesota. Amount of this purchase is two hundred forty thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars. And we have Fire Chief Joel White here with us here tonight. Joel, tell us about this brush truck.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. This brush truck is gonna replace our two thousand and two GMC one-ton duly, which has a slide-in unit from two thousand and five that was never meant to be a wildland truck or a brush truck. It was meant to be a compressed air foam system for weapons of mass destruction, decon, that we had acquired from grant monies after nine eleven for a hazmat team. And we converted it to our wildland truck. Excuse me, my nasal allergies are bothering me. And this new wildland or brush truck will be multipurpose, not only for brush fires, but will be able to carry rescue extrication tools on it for motor vehicle collisions that we can utilize on soft roads during the springtime. And with its narrow body too, we are able to get down some of the streets in the winter time when snow starts to encroach on them in the one-way parts of town so that we can have a quicker attack on any players that may be in that area.
Thank you. Would someone in the council care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Johnson? Second, Councilman Ward. Any questions from the council about the truck or its use? Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. What will happen to the two thousand and two model being replaced?
Sure, the two thousand and two pickup, we will keep that. And we're gonna use that for the tow vehicle for the USAR trailer that we purchased a couple of months ago. And the slide-in unit that we've been trying to keep operating for the past several years, we will surplus that at public auction.
Yeah, thanks. Any other question? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup? Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for joining us. Joel, good to see you as always. If anyone didn't know what a brush truck was, now you do.
It's cool.
Next, we've got a possible approval of a bid. It's a hundred forty-six thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents to CWF Masonry for our street maintenance concrete repair project. Stu, walk us through that bid. It looks like they were beneath estimates even.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. They're quite a bit underestimated. And this is, of course, the work that we do in preparation for seal coating, which will happen next year. They'll be working in next year's chip seal route for this project. And CWF has had this contract a number of times in the past and we've had a great working relationship with them. They do good work. So, we recommend that you approve the bid for this project.
So, moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second. Lee Belt, any questions for Street Works Director Stu Nelson? Jordan?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval of a pay request. Title number four, it's for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. It is accompanied by a change order for eighty-nine hundred eighty dollars. This is for our Eighth Avenue pavement rehab project paid to Reedy Construction here in Aberdeen. Stu, tell us about the project and change order.
Sure. So, you may remember this project from, it's, it's a number of years old. We inserted doll bars into a section of Eighth Avenue from Dakota Street going east to about Kettering Drive that had a lot of faulted pavement and were a real rough ride. So, this project inserted doll bars and then we came in and ground the surface to smooth it out. And it's, I think, been an overall, a very good project. It's improved the ride of that piece of Eighth Avenue substantially. We had some issues with the sealant used on the doll bars because they cut a slot and they dropped the doll bar in there and then they cover it with an epoxy material. And that material is cracking and, and spalling out. So, the contractor came back in and repaired the default or the defective joints. And then, we were monitoring the, the performance of that, those new repairs. And there's been some cracking, but we have not really seen anything where that material's coming out of the cracks. And then, in light of the fact that in our transmission line project, we're gonna tear up basically the north third of that street and take all of these doll bars out that we put in in twenty twenty-two on the north side of the street on the westbound lane. We felt it was probably best just to release the retainage and, and close the project out.
And it was the extra legwork that went to repairing those, that sealant that was that?
So, that was.
Change order.
That was basically, the, the change order was materials, just basically materials. There was no cost to us for making those repairs initially. That was part of the warranty.
Thank you for that clarification.
Move to approve the payment.
Second.
Motion Ronane, second, Ward. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got another payment. It's payment number four. It's for our Third Avenue Southeast and South Roosevelt Traffic Signal Improvements. It's for fifty-six thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars. Change order is a negative amount. In this case, it's eighty-six hundred seventy-nine and fifty-nine cents going towards us. This are to Ring Electric here in Aberdeen. Stu, walk us through the final payment.
Sure, yes. Like you mentioned, it's, it is a final payment. The contractor recently installed the pad push buttons that hadn't been installed there and kinda did the few punch list things that there were there. And you can see by the change order, we have, we had a pretty substantial savings there. And most of that was really due to the fact that the way the contractor chose to approach this, they, they didn't use the temporary signals that we had actually bid and were able to do this, a lot of it with traffic still moving through the intersection. So, we really appreciate the fact that they were able to accommodate that and really have very minimal impacts to the traveling public from this project. So, and I, we, we think other than, you know, these, these projects just take so long because it takes us so long to get the poles. You know, it was mentioned earlier, eight months to get a pole. And it was closer to a year for these actually. And, you know, the actual work doesn't take very long. So, it was a, a great project and we recommend approval.
Move to approve the pay request and change order.
Motion Johnson, second. Norvstrup. Stu, remind us the total overall budget because it's four brand-new poles, all with lights. What was the total overall budget?
So, I think if you look, it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was the bid for this.
Thank you. Stu, any other questions from the council? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got a amendment to engineering services agreement with Helms and Associates of Aberdeen. A few changes going on over there. Stu, tell us about our agreement with Helms.
Sure. So, just briefly, this is, you know, we are moving forward with this project now. And we're, we will be in need of project inspection and construction administration services and Helms is going to provide those for us. And so, this is the amount for doing that. Water tower construction's a highly specialized type of construction. We don't have anybody with the expertise on staff to be able to perform these inspections. And while we would be able to do the inspections on the, the transmission line part of it, it would take our technicians away from other projects that they'll be working on during this time. The Public Works Facility and, and any other, you know, projects that we'll have for next construction season. So, we'd recommend that we approve this amendment to the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilwoman Lee Belt, second, Councilman Ronane. Anything to share from the council or questions to be answered before we take a vote? Jordan, no, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Jordan, I see the financial consideration is listed in the Water Enterprise Fund. Feeling okay with this being adjusted upward by six hundred and fifty-nine grand?
That's a great question. This expense is accounted for within our project estimate costs for the rate study. So, we have contemplated this cost as part of the work that is being done to build the rate study.
Okay. I was looking for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. This will move along to the next segment of our meeting, which is the claims and payroll. We've got the bills this week, of course, and the payroll pay period. It's from August tenth through the twenty-third. Is that correct dates for us here?
That's correct.
All right. Sounds good. I would take a motion to approve those payments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Nelson. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronane.
I abstain as the payment to climate control, but I vote aye as to all other payments.
Councilmember Foeburg.
I abstain to the service charge to Dakota Bank and aye for everything else.
Councilmember Lee Belt.
Aye for everything.
Ward.
Aye for everything.
Johnson.
Aye.
E Conger.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
I also abstain to the payment to climate control, but aye to the rest. Motion does carry. Next, we've got our city manager's report. Rob, what has been going on in the last week?
Well, we have, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I think that is probably one of about ten that I've missed in thirty years. So, I, but it was a flight thing and, and you got through the meeting probably in better shape than if I'd been here. So, it worked out well. We did review, Jordan and I went through all of our potential budget adjustments for, based on requests from the different departments. We sat down with all, all the department heads just to make sure they understand what's in this budget proposal and how it might affect their department as it's submitted. I did have the opportunity last week to go to the Energy Summit in Mitchell. Councilman Ward was also there. Some very enlightening discussions about a lot of things, a lot of it's economic development related and how important energy is to siding and, and what we need to look forward to in order to make sure that we're a growing state and, and doing the right things for our citizens. We did also have a, a meeting, larger cities here had a discussion last week to go through some of the common areas that we have to think about for the future, both interests and concerns. And, and it was just a, a good meeting to make sure everybody's in the same room for a little while and, and having that discussion. And we did the same meeting last year as well. And it, it, a, a lot of the stuff shows up as, as much larger communities like Sioux Falls have bigger concerns about a lot of things. But it's good for us to have a voice at the table as well. I did want to mention too, Municipal League is coming up at the end of the month, end of September. If you did want to attend, please get ahold of Marie and she'll get you signed up. And at that particular meeting, we will, I don't think we've ever done this, but we, they have a Hall of Fame thing and they, we've never submitted as a city of Aberdeen. And so, I had Marie assemble through HR a list of our twenty-year-plus employees. And it's, it's a lot. It's fifty-one employees out of your two hundred and eighty roughly employees. Fifty-one are over twenty years this year. And that actually is, is a nice segue into, we have, in the la, since I last met with you, we did a fifteen-year certificate of appreciation for Ryan Husby and Parks Rec. He was also in traffic control at one time. We had Brady Berg from the Police Department that had his twenty-year milestone this month. And Mike Remick in the Fire Department also had his twenty years. So, congratulations to those folks. No, I do have one other. Missouri River Stakeholder Meeting is coming up on the third of September. And it's just gonna be a panel discussion, but it's something that I think is, is important. And, and the wins discussion probably warrants some, some of our council there. If you can make it, if you can, and we're gonna have too many, we probably should let Jordan know so we can at least make sure that the media is notified of, of how many are gonna be there. And then, I will ask a question. We, there, there's a lot of information based on the discussion that Brent had tonight. Would there be an appetite to do a work session, maybe September eighth, to go through a lot of the particulars of the thought process? There, we've got some hybrid thoughts for the, the way to approach the project as well as that would modify costs that, that you've seen. Everybody's seen costs. But I think it would be a, a good thing if we, probably everybody heard the same story. So, you could at least understand kinda what we would be looking at for potential loss of parking spots, how you try to mitigate some of those as well as what the cost would now be. So, I'm proposing maybe doing a September eighth one, which would be your off week for council meeting. But if we wanted to meet at, at five thirty or, or fo, five o'clock, whatever, whatever the council would like, I think we could have some, some things put together for you that at least would generate a discussion that, that you'd be able to have more information going into the budget.
Generally in favor?
Yep, yep.
Yes, having the discussion.
Available.
Five PM, five thirty PM? Is there a time that works, four thirty PM, that people would prefer?
Flexible.
I think I'm gonna be on an airplane, but maybe I'll be in the Minneapolis Airport.
Stick with five thirty as far as people are concerned or push it to five?
Five, four, yeah.
Let's, let's do five. Push it up a little bit.
On the eighth.
Monday the eighth.
Five on the eighth. Monday the eighth, yes.
What time are we saying?
Five.
Thank you.
And I, I believe that is all I had. Oh, by the way, that Missouri River Stakeholder meeting will be at five thirty on the third. It's listed for an hour, five thirty on the third, yes.
And where will that be, Rob?
That will be at the deck.
And then, Chief McNeil tomorrow is National Night Out. It's a rescheduled event because there was rainfall the last time through. Do you want to give the public a reminder about what that event consists of?
Thank you. So, I, I think the weather, without talking about it too much and, and jinxing us, I think the weather's gonna be very nice for that. So, beautiful Melgar Park will be down there from six to nine. We'll have some presentations, give some awards. There'll be a lot of entertainment for kids, a lot of the first responder agencies and the supporting community service agencies and criminal justice agencies will be there. Salvation Army will be providing a meal again. So, it's gonna be a great night. Always very successful. I anticipate that be well-attended. So, I would recommend come early and look for a good parking space. Northern State Started School, probably see some individuals from, from college there too as well. So, come out and see us and it's gonna be a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. So, without further ado, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
I'll just mention you can park in the northern lots after five PM. They won't ticket you, just, you know, if you're going to National Night.
Everybody park at Northern, anywhere you want, all throughout campus. Five PM, anytime after five.
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, second. Ward, all in favor, please say aye.
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 What was the name? We are adjourned.